Ready to go? Yep, okay. It is 3:34 and I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today's date is Monday, March the 24th, 2025. Ms. Anna, can you establish quorum, please?
Mayor Norrie Garza.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Councilwoman Marissa Gurney.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Okay, next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Almighty Father, as we gather here today in service to our community, we pause to recognize national crime victims right with. We lift up in prayer all of those who have been affected by crime, the victims, their families, and those who work tirelessly to support them. May they find peace, strength, and justice. May we work together to build a community where justice prevails, victims are heard, and healing is possible. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is disclosures of conflict of interest. Ms. Anna, has anything been filed?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata has one on file for items 5960 and executive session item number two. All of these items pertain to Cimarron.
And that's going to be all?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you so much. Next item, our presentations. And our first presentation would be the Girl Scout Week, but we're waiting for them to get here from after school. So we're going to move on to Women's Empowerment Day.
Yeah.
Mario?
Yeah.
So we could try and spin up the...
Monday?
Yeah.
You shouldn't expect anything. He's just copying and he's cutting and pasting.
This proclamation was brought before us by the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce, which reads as follows. Whereas the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce is committed to fostering a thriving and inclusive business community, recognizing the invaluable contributions of women in all sectors. Whereas the Women on a Mission Women's Empowerment Event is established as an annual gathering to uplift, inspire, and empower women by providing opportunities to connect, learn, and grow in an environment dedicated to their successes. Whereas this event will offer enriching sessions focused on wellness, financial literacy, networking, and personal and professional development, ensuring that women have access to the knowledge and resources necessary to thrive. Whereas the City of Mission and its leaders recognize the importance of creating opportunities for women to engage in meaningful discussions, establish strong professional networks, and access mentorship and guidance from accomplished women across various industries. Whereas we honor and celebrate the resilience, determination, and achievements of women in our community and beyond, acknowledging their impact in shaping a more equitable and prosperous society. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim March 26, 2025, as Women on a Mission Women's Empowerment Day in Mission, Texas, and encourage all residents, businesses, and organizations to participate in this inspiring and transforming event. Proclaimed on this the 24th day of March, 2025.
Okay, thank you.
May I move to approve the proclamation as read?
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for Women's Empowerment Day as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
We would like to say thank you so much for this recognition, and we are very appreciative, and thank you again for allowing us to make history. We're so excited, and I also want to take this time to thank our awesome Women's Committee, which is, they are right behind me, which is a group of stellar women as well. So thank you. And arriba las mujeres.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and say a little something? Anyone?
Thank you, Mary.
Mayor and council, we're very happy to be here in Mission, and we support women and businesses, women-owned businesses, especially the ones here locally that help support our community. So thank you for encouraging them and honoring them.
Thank you. Alrighty. Well, we have a proclamation for you. Would you like to step up here and take a picture?
I had three ladies at home. I had to walk.
Okay, one more. Last one. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is Animal Cruelty Prevention Month.
Mayor, with us today, we have our staff from the Office of the Animal Control, and we also have representatives from PAWS for Help. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the month of April is dedicated to the prevention of cruelty to animals because being cruel to animals is an unjustifiable act and should not exist in any civilized society. Whereas animals play an important part in our everyday lives, even if we don't personally have pets, it's vital to make sure that they are truly kind and with the respect and care they deserve. Whereas animal cruelty is a sad reality that has existed for ages. Our furry friends cannot speak up to stop the mistreatment, so it is up to us to put an end to this. This April, let's come together and stand against cruelty to animals and protect our furry buddies. Whereas if you don't have pets of your own, you can still participate in Prevention of Cruelty Animals Month by fostering a pet until it finds its new forever home, or by donating money or much-needed supplies to your local animal shelters. This will help ensure that pets waiting to be rehomed will get all the necessary care. Whereas the City of Mission would like to invite the entire community to support the City of Mission Animal Shelter, PAWS for Help Incorporated, and other organizations, which encourage responsible and compassionate treatment of all animals, and invite you to visit our animal shelter and adopt a pet. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Prevention of Cruelty to Animal Month in Mission, Texas. Proclaimed on this the 24th day of March, 2025.
May I like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read for Animal Cruelty Prevention Month. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Good afternoon to the leadership of Mission. We'd like to thank you for everything that you do for our furry friends. I'm here, Ms. Dendia Bahi, and PAWS for Help are at the Capitol right now, lobbying for the animal welfare and advocacy that is so much needed. We want to thank you deeply from our hearts because these animals need our protection, and without you, we cannot do it. I think you're very kind. Y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And please come up for a picture. Okay, the next item is National Crime Victims Rights Week.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Chief Torres, Mission Police Department. Here we have some of our investigators who always bring justice to victims of crimes. And in addition, we have our Crime Victim Liaison, Mrs. Sella, here with us this evening. Crime Victims Rights Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas crime affects individuals, families, and communities in profound and varied ways, often leaving lasting physical, emotional, and social challenges. And whereas the concept of kinship underscores the connections that builds bridges to support services that share strength among survivors, advocates, and communities. This week celebrates the perseverance and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement. Remind us all that the term victim is more than just a label. Whereas kinship is a foundation of victim advocacy, inspiring trauma, informed care, and meet survivors where they are. And whereas through kinship, we build peer networks and community alliances that empower survivors, foster resilience, and offer pathways to healing. And whereas kinship reminds us that the strength that comes from connections, the importance of listening to every voice, and the power we must create lasting change when we work together. And whereas the City of Mission is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for a better future for all victims and survivors. And now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the City Council of the City of Mission, on behalf of the citizens of Mission, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6 through April 12 as Crime Victims Rights Week. This proclamation reaffirms our dedication to building connections, standing in kinship with survivors, and created a future where healing and hope are within reach for everyone. Proclaimed on the 24th day of March, 2025. And Mrs. Sella, would you like to say a few words?
If you'll just hold on just a second, we're going to take a vote. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation as read by Chief Torres.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read for Crime Victims Rights Week. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Every April, the Office of Victims Crimes leads communities throughout the country in their annual observances of National Crime Victims Rights Week. This year, 2025, the theme is kinship. Kinship is a state of being in survivors that drives vital connections to services, rights, and healing. Kinship is where victim advocacy begins. Every year, thousands of communities across the nation honor the dedication of those before us that establishes victim rights and renew commitment to guarantee that all victims have the rights and services that they need to recover from any crime. Victim support services, along with police departments and nonprofit organizations, participate in marches, tree planting ceremonies, and many other activities that are held each year to promote victims' rights and to honor crime victims and those who advocate on their behalf. We would like to invite you and our community to our annual event that is going to be on April 10, Thursday, at the Mission Police Department. Thank you, and thank you for your support.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That's April 10, you said?
Yes, Thursday.
And that's what time?
From 6 to 8.
Six to eight. Okay. Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, well then, you want to come up for a picture? Okay, the next item is our National Library Week proclamation.
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. I'm here with the presence of the library board, friends of the library, and some of our library staff here to present the proclamation for National Library Week, that it will take place on April 6 through the 12. Our youth coordinator, Magali Garcia, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. Whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. Whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. Whereas libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. Whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success. Whereas libraries nurture young minds through story times, STEAM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifetime. Whereas libraries protect the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. Whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme "Drawn to the Library." Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the City Council of the City of Mission, proclaim April 6 through 12, 2025, as National Library Week. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit the library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways that the library draws us together as a community. Proclaimed on this the 24th day of March, 2025.
May I move to approve the proclamation as read?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for National Library Week. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And I think we're going to go down for the picture.
Maybe we should take our books, mayor.
Yes, that would be good. Bring your books. And thank you so much. Okay. You want to do that? Sure? We can do that? Okay?
The second item is yours too.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much for all the opportunities that the City...
Well, thank you so much for all the opportunities that the City of Mission and to your leadership and Mayor and Commissioners to allow us to bring in the public library for your community. We're very excited not only about presenting our proclamation for National Library Week, but also because being awarded for the Excellence Award. The Spear Memorial Library of Mission, Texas, has received the prestigious 2024 Achievement of Library Excellence Award from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. This award celebrates libraries that excel in services under the population, utilizing innovative marketing and fostering collaborations. It recognizes those that enhance community engagements through unique programs, promote literacy, support digital inclusion, and offers cultural and educational programming. With only 102 out of the 542 public libraries in Texas received this honor in 2024, the Spear Memorial Library commitment to excel and this stands out in these consecutive two years. Last year, we also were awarded with this Excellence Award, and we're very happy. This reflects the hard work of our library staff, our library board, and our friends of the library, and of course, our community that always supports us in everything that we provide to them through literacy, engagement, and everything that you guys allow us to do for them. So, thank you for your support always.
Thank you so much, and congratulations for the second year in a row. That's awesome. Okay. Now we'll go down there.
Yes.
Okay, the next item is a presentation from our Keep Mission Beautiful Committee.
Good afternoon. We're going to do a little presentation for Keep Mission Beautiful on an upcoming project that we're proposing. But before we go into that, I just want to say that we're really proud. This was our first year that we actually sought recognition because it's our first year as an official affiliate of Keep Texas Beautiful. So they have three rankings, which is a good standing Silver Star and Gold Star. And we were able to obtain the Silver Star rating, which is really good for our first year.
Yes.
But with us here today, we have Mario. He is the chairman of our board. And then we have Logan, who is a member of our board as well, and Mr. Menbiola. Somebody give it off to them so they can go over the presentation.
Awesome, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Thank you guys for your time. Really appreciate being here and presenting to you what we have in store for the City of Mission. I really believe that the City Hall is the crown jewel for the City of Mission. So that's really where we're tailoring our efforts in this project with this presentation. So I'm going to go ahead and bring Logan, who is a fellow member of the committee, and he's going to go over the presentation. So thank you guys very much.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much. Let me just kind of briefly go through this a bit. As I mentioned, this is a kind of an influx project, but this is sort of what we sort of came up with. I don't think this is on. There you go. Great. So what we're trying to do is to have more ones in the space, you know, for example, Lyons Park is a great example of an empty sort of space, and now you have a whole bunch of people in there. And so I'm trying to sort of kind of create this with here, actually. So we want to have a low-maintenance space, something that's unique to Mission. I think Mission is extraordinary in its natural habitat. So we want to incorporate some sort of native plants as well, some sort of ones that you can find at Lowe's for, you know. And so you want to be able to kind of create this unique space. So essentially, you create a winding or a fixed path, you know, creating exploration in this space. So you have about 80% native and 20%, you know, ones which you can find at the store, right? And actually have sculptures or different sort of art or unique plans in mind. And then we can also sort of have the city flower, the city vine, the tree, things that we've already recognized as a city and already have them in there as well. And I wanted to briefly mention that you'll see that there's some brown spots, and then those would be, you know, either rocks or some sort of ones to have a seat. And then at the center, you have a sort of rock-water feature. Now, this is not a fixed plan. This can be changed, and this can, you know, always be moved. Example of this water feature would be a sort of simple rock with just a little bit of water pouring out of it. Another plan in mind is to use this blank space near the entrance of the hall and to create some sort of scene, right? Some sort of a social media scene, right? So you can have signage as well, you can use some archways. And this is symbolic of the Hogan Via Trail, which was a project done in the 1940s that began in Mercedes, but extended all the way from, I believe, Rio Grande City to San Benito. But it never became a full project. It did exist for a little bit. This fixture is from Mercedes, but this is something which could be done, which is symbolic of our past. Exterior-wise, you can sort of create wisteria or some sort of vines that grow on the circular path which we have around. So to sort of create some sort of uniqueness with either Hogan Vias, wisteria, for example. Native plants, which we could have, we could have some lantanas, misflowers, frog fruit, white brushes, turk's cap. And there's a wide exploration of the native landscapes. Some of the exotic, poinsettias, the wisteria, hibiscus, among some ones which we have on this list as well. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Well, Council, Mayor, I want to thank you guys for the brief time that we have here. We also want to address some of the other things that we're doing within the city. We invite you to attend one of our annual trash bash, which is happening this weekend. The first 300 participants are actually going to get shirts, right, and capes. But going back to Logan, so this project, it's going to take some immense work. So what are we doing as a committee to ensure that it does happen? We're currently collaborating with another committee from the City of Mission, and we have multiple channels in which we're looking to fundraise in order to make this happen. So we're committed, we have a vision, we have a timeline, and we know we're going to execute and ensure that the City of Mission is very proud of City Hall when we're done.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'd like to get a picture with you guys with our t-shirts so that we can promote the event on Saturday.
From Lucio Cabazos, unfortunately, she's not able to be here due to some family issues, but I mean, she's very committed and also helping out in the committee.
Mayor, if I could make a comment?
Sure. Yeah, please.
So you know that there's various areas in the City of Mission where there's, you see a sign where it says, "Welcome to Mission, Texas." And I fortunately passed by one yesterday, and it looks absolutely terrible. So maybe when we're coming from Mexico into the United States, it's kind of there, like you can see it. But if we added trees, or I loved your presentation, Logan. If we could maybe go to those different areas, I know that's over here on Mayberry, on Batanz Park, on Conway, and then there's one more. Which one am I missing? The one over there where you enter? There's one more. I don't know, I'll find out. But maybe we could put some beautiful flowers and some greenery there, because right now it looks totally bare. But then again, I was told that we may not even have permission to do something like that? Or do we have rights to those areas?
We have rights.
Okay. And I'll help you with getting some donations possibly for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bad night.
I know that the girls aren't here yet, right?
No, not yet.
Not yet, okay. All right. We'll go to the next item, item number eight, the Racial Profiling and Analysis Report for 2024.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Chief Torres, Mission PD. Today, we're here to present the Racial Profiling Report that has been submitted to the Texas Commission on Enforcement. We have met the deadline, and we've met all the requirements. The Mission Police Department has adopted a detailed written policy on racial profiling. Our policy clearly defines acts constituting racial profiling. Number two, strictly prohibits peace officers employed by the Mission Police Department to engage in racial profiling. Number three, implements a process by which an individual may file a police complaint against police officers. Number four, provides public education relating the agency's complaint process. Number five, requires appropriate corrective action to be taken against peace officers employed by the Mission Police Department who are engaged in racial profiling. Number six, requires collection of information relating to motor vehicle stops. And the last one requires the chief administrator of the agency to submit an annual report to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement and also to the governing body. We are in compliance, and thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Just a presentation, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next item is a report from our Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Mike Betas. So wonderful activities happening at the Chamber of Commerce. Of course, we have the Women's History Month Celebration and Community Market happening on Wednesday, the March 26th. It'll be a day filled with women everything, starting from 10:00 a.m. up until 5:30 p.m., which we will conclude our community market as well. The market is having an all-women's, all-women's entrepreneurs, so it's really exciting, and we do want the community to come and join us. On the 27th, we do have a ribbon cutting for Star Storage. They are celebrating a milestone here off of Griffin Parkway. March 26th, another ribbon cutting for New Me Beauty. And on the 31st of March, we are releasing the new podcast episode. The topic is on health care and community connect with Lance Ames, and it premieres at 9:00 a.m. And you can find it on YouTube, Spotify, and Apple Podcasts. And on the 16th of April, we do have coffee croissants in Commerce, and we are partnering with Greater McAllen Real Estate Association and inviting all of the developers and anybody tied to the development industry to join us as well. And upcoming for our signature events on May 2nd, we are now open and securing teams, golf teams for our annual citrus golf classic happening on the first Friday of every May. And we are open for sponsorships as well. So we do invite anybody to come and join us for the golf tournament. And lastly, I just want to officially let the community know, there was a press release that we shared, that the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce is officially now an accredited Chamber of Commerce. We are one out of 42 accredited chambers in the state of Texas, and only 3% in the nation that are accredited across the United States. So it's a big milestone for us, and we will be announcing more about our accreditation and do a milestone celebration in the upcoming month. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. That is something to be really, really proud of. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Team effort, thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, the next item are the departmental reports. Those were in our packets. Are there any questions, comments, or motions? Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the departmental reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is citizens' participation. Ms. Senna? No one has signed up? Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. I believe we are pulling item number 29. Are there any other items that need to be pulled? Or is there a motion?
Mayor, I want to approve that on the consent agenda with exception of item 29.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, except for item number 29. And that would have, item number 14 has a resolution number of 1967. Item number 18 has an ordinance number of 5608. Number 19 has a ordinance number of 5609. And I think that's it. Right, Ms. Senna?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, on item 29, Leroy from the Firefighter Association came to see me this afternoon and wired a few changes to make sure that the meeting confer does not expire. Patricia has changed that wording, and you should have copies. Did we give copies out to everybody yet? Can I do that? No, it's right now. And that's just, all we've done is to clarify that by extending the meeting confer, that it does not terminate. And that's all basically it's asking, and Patricia's handing out what's in yellow, and staff is okay with the proposed changes. We made some little grammatical corrections on there, but that was it. But it's not from what's in your packet. What's in yellow is what we added on.
What we added, okay.
We have no problems with the additions that the Fire Association is asking for.
Are there any questions? Comments? A motion? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the extension agreement with the fire, Mission Fire Department, meeting confer.
Well, that's, that's why, it's approved by the bank, it needs to be approved by the city council so that the subdivision-
But it says approved by the bank?
Yes, it's an email that we got, I have it here.
How much more time do they need to finish? About two months, six to eight weeks.
To finish what?
The improvements, putting the streets and all the infrastructure. JP, have you looked at the letter of credit already?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Yes, sir, I did, and also I went and walked the project. The developer already started implementing and installing the infrastructure, which they had beginning our past meeting, they had started construction on the infrastructure. They started now, also they deliver all the materials on site, so as they promised the last meeting, they already starting the construction of it.
I know that the city council has some new requirements now on letter of credit for, they, I mean, they can't have any permits, they understand that.
Yes, so I relate that to the developer about the restriction on the platnot for no building permits until the infrastructure is complete. They are asking that they be allowed foundation permits for your consideration.
So this item is only to approve the, the, the letter of credit, is that correct?
The first one, yes, is to approve the letter of credit.
And the second item?
Is to approve the plat.
The plat, along with the variance or, or to allow the foundation permits?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, so right now, we're only looking at the letter of credit?
Correct.
Great. The, the letter of credit says, it does say that it's approved, that they're working on documentation. I would feel more comfortable having the actual documentation. I don't know how, Ruben, that's your line of work, so.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, I mean, the bank should be able to give you the letter of credit subject to us approving.
It can be approved subject to that additional documentation or it could be tabled.
If that says the council desire to do that, then I would be subject to both the city, JP approving it and the city attorney approving it to form. Because all we have is an email and it's not really a letter of credit.
Right.
They're saying they're, they're going to do it, but we don't have actually the letter of credit at hand yet. So you could do one of two things, deny it, table it till you get actually the letter of credit or approve it subject to receiving the letter of credit and being reviewed by both JP and the city attorney's office.
And, and because once, let's say you give the letter of credit, how much, my question is, how much more time do they need to finish the subdivision? I mean, this is in case they don't finish, I mean, because I think they're going to want for us to approve the recording, right? So they can be able, before it is completed.
Right, that's what the second item is going to be.
That's why I feel a little uncomfortable, I don't think we done it in the past, I'm not sure, but I think it creates a liability for the city. What do you think?
Well, it's, a lot of cities allow this in their codes. It's not ideal, right? Because if the developer goes bankrupt, then the city has to cash the letter of credit and the city has to use the funds to finish the subdivision. It's just not ideal for the city, but most cities allow that in their codes to assist the developers with their projects.
Because we don't know if $215,000 will be enough to finish, I'm not sure.
JP?
Yes, sir, I review the, the infrastructure estimate they submitted. Needs enough to complete the subdivision on phase one. Because they're also working on phase two, but it won't be enough for phase one.
Streets, utilities, everything?
Yes.
Two hundred?
Streets are pretty much done, they just need the west section of it, it's just a stretch of street that they need to finish, and also to connect the pond, the drainage pond that they have there, so that's all they need to.
Mayor, I personally, this is my personal opinion, and I put the item on the agenda as a courtesy, because everybody deserves to be heard, but I don't like to create liabilities for the city. So I don't, I personally don't feel comfortable with it myself, but I-
Can you have that in a formal motion?
Oh, formal motion? So I, I don't even want to table the item, I would like just to deny it, that's my motion.
Okay. There's a, a motion? Is there any discussion or a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to deny the letter of credit request. All in favor to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is a five zero vote for denial.
And then the next item needs to be denied as well.
Okay. All right, so item number 60.
62.
62, sorry, yes, 62. Directly related to item 61, is there a motion?
The motion will be the same to deny.
So there's a motion to deny, is there a second?
Second.
Here's a motion and a second to deny the plat for Las Misiones as presented. All in favor say aye to deny.
Aye.
Aye. All in, opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. I would suggest to keep working and hopefully when, if you get it to a higher percentage of completion, we, it would be looked at more favorably along with a complete documentation of the, of the letter of credit. Would that be correct, Ruben?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay, thank you. All right. I don't know how the girls coming along. They're waiting?
They still haven't sent me a text if they're all, if they're all here.
Okay, okay, not a problem. They seem eager already. Okay, we are gonna, well, we have to wait six minutes for our public hearings, so we can go to item-
They're all ready here.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. Oh, we're gonna, we're going to do the audit next, I thought that, we're going to do the audit. We have five minutes, is, is that going to be sufficient?
Where, where is that item?
It's the next one, it's 46. It should be the next one under approval authorization. Before that, it's a public hearings.
Okay, into, okay, all right, we can do that. Yes, we're gonna move on to approvals and authorizations, item number 46. Rita?
You'll introduce the auditors and then let them do their thing.
Thank you, Mayor, and also, all won't take time. This is item number 46, should read acceptance of the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2023. I have here Mrs. Medallin Niguez and Chad to make a presentation.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Mr. Betis. My name is Medallin Niguez, I'm a partner with Carrickson Ingram, and we're here to present the audit of the city of Mission for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2023. With me is Chad Young, he's a supervising senior that led the engagement team in conducting the audit and worked very closely with management throughout the process. My understanding is that you have the annual comprehensive financial report in your packet. It is a 200, over 200 pages of information regarding the financials of the city as of September 30, 2023. So what, what we'll do, we'll try to go over the highlights of the report. So I'll start off on page 13, where we provide our independent auditor's report. So in that report, we're representing that the, in our opinion, the financial statements as presented are fairly stated in all material respects. There were various adjustments that were required to reflect the financial statements as they are being reported today in comparison to the original records that were provided for audit purposes. So part of those adjustments included corrections of errors related to prior period, so it restated the, the equity basically in several funds. Also, there was a change in accounting principle because the city implemented a new GASP pronouncement that was GASP 96, subscription-based information technology arrangements. So in order to implement it, there was a requirement to restate the beginning numbers. So that is included there in that report as well, but our opinion is not affected with respect to this matter. I'm going to turn it over to Chad and he'll walk us through the numbers.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump in right into the general fund budgetary comparison schedule. So you can follow along on pages 137 through 145 in your financial statements. This chart above here presents an overall summarized picture. So overall budgeted revenues were $51.2 million, while actual revenues were $51.3 million. Budgeted expenses was $58.3 million and actual expenses was $48.1. So overall, the city stayed within the budget for the general fund.
What do you think made that difference of $10 million?
So looking at the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances, which you can follow along on page 37, overall revenues for the general fund was $51.5 million, expenses $51.3 million. The other financing sources and uses has a positive balance of $3.8 million, which includes your leases and subscriptions, proceeds from sales of assets as well as transfers in and out. This led to a change in fund balance, a gain of $3.9 million. It was a $4.1 million loss in the prior year. At the beginning, fund balance was $3.5 million, for the ending fund balance was $7.4 million. So the largest changes from the prior year was an increases in tax revenues of about $4.3 million due to an increase in valuation of land and property in 2023, as well as an increase in transfers in from the utility fund in the amount of about $1.5 million that was to support overall activities. All the other categories of revenue expenditures were pretty comparable to the prior year.
Okay, now?
We're looking at the, the balance sheet for the general fund, you can follow along on page 35 of your reports. Overall total assets was $24.5 million, liabilities and deferred inflow $17.1 million, with a fund balance of $7.4 million. Of that $7.4 million, there was an assigned, unassigned fund balance of about $7.1 million. So overall assets were pretty comparable to the prior year. There was an increase of about $1 million, there were small increases and decreases throughout various categories of assets. For example, there was an increase in due from other governments, mostly related to sales tax growth, about $590,000, as well as an increase from advanced funds receivable from the golf course of about $234,000. Liability has decreased about $2.7 million. This is mostly due to a decrease in due to other funds in the component unit. The decrease is due to amounts that were owed to other funds from the cash pool bank account at the end of the year, and the fluctuations of the amount due to, due from the general fund as of 9/30 within the cash pool itself. So in the 23 fiscal year, the city removed some of the utility funds claim on cash and moved this money to a separate bank account in order to help with the tracking of monies for the debt reserve requirements. And thus, this lowered the utility funds claim on cash pool at the end of the year, in which turn led to a decrease in the amount of the general fund due to, by the same amount. Overall, as discussed, the, the increase in fund balances was due to the current year operations as discussed on the prior slide. The city does have a minimum fund balance policy in place stating that the general fund shall maintain a minimum of two months of operating expenditures within its assigned, unassigned, and committed fund balance. This was not meant, two months of expenditures was roughly about $8.56 million, and assigned and unassigned fund balances about $3.8 million. So the city has about five, has about 58, or 50 days, they're short $1.4 million. So looking at the business type activity, was the enterprise funds, which consists of the utility golf course, solid waste, and the event center, I'm going to kind of concentrate on the total at the end of the slide there. So looking at the total of all the funds, which the majority of it is made up of the utility fund, total operating revenues was about $35.6 million, which is a $5 million increase compared to the prior year, of which the utility fund increased $4 million in the solid waste, making up most of the remaining increase, both of which was due to an increase in rates that occurred in 2023. So total operating expenses of 21, or $29.1 million was an increase of $2 million from the prior year. Most of the increase, about $1.8 million, was in the utility fund, which was caused by a fluctuation in purchase of chemicals for water treatment. Non-operating revenues and expenses, which consist of gains on disposal of assets, interest earned, bond interest expenses, fiscal charges, and transfers in and out, total $288,000. So this is about $1.1 million increase from the prior year. The main differences occurred in the utility fund again. There was an increase of about $1.4 million in transfers made to the general fund, but offsetting that was a $3.5 million in capital contributions, which are developer contributions, which can fluctuate year to year based on overall city growth. So this led to a change in net position of $6.4 million, which is a $3.7 million increase from the prior year, for beginning net position of $67.1 million and an ending net position of $73.8 million.
Good night, Ms. Maral.
Thank you, Chad. The city is also subject to single audit since they do receive federal awards. For the 2023 fiscal period, they received over $18 million in federal awards. From that pool, the major program that was tested for that fiscal year was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which made up over $13 million. In, in this page that you see before, you, this is included in the single audit report, which is presented in a separate packet from the annual comprehensive financial report. That kind of summarizes the results of the audit. Towards the center of the slide, the federal awards, we are representing an unmodified opinion with no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no non-compliance-
Non-operating revenues and expenses, which consist of gains on disposable assets, interest earned, bond interest expenses, fiscal charges, and transfers in and out, total two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So this is about one point one million increase from the prior year. The main differences occurred in the utility fund again. There was an increase of about one point four million dollars in transfers made to the general fund, but offsetting that was a three point five million dollars in capital contributions, which are developer contributions, which can fluctuate year to year based on overall city growth. So this led to a change in net position of six point four million dollars, which is a three point seven million dollar increase from the prior year, for beginning net position of sixty-seven point one million, and ending net position of seventy-three point eight million dollars.
Good, back to Ms. Medallin.
Thank you, Chad. The city is also subject to single audit, since they do receive federal awards. For the twenty twenty-three fiscal period, they received over eighteen million dollars in federal awards. From that pool, the major program that was tested for that fiscal year was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which made up over thirteen million. In this page that you see before, you, this is included in the single audit report, which is presented in a separate packet from the annual comprehensive financial report. That kind of summarizes the results of the audit. Towards the center of the slide, the federal awards, we are representing a non-modified opinion, with no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no non-compliance that was detected for that major program. On the upper half, this is the results of the audit procedures related to internal controls over financial reporting. It's also tied to our opinion of the financials, so we're also issuing a non-modified opinion for that report, but we did identify various material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, one non-compliance, as well as other control deficiency and improvement points that we have discussed in detail throughout the course of the audit with management, and then again with the internal audit committee. We went over those items in detail, as well as all the proposed adjustments that were provided and accepted by management. In addition to those two reports, we also provide a required communication for the Board of Trustees and management. In that report, you will find our auditor responsibilities, as well as management's responsibilities outlined. We provide judgments and sensitive estimates that are taken into consideration in putting together the financial statements. The summary of audit adjustments is listed there, including the proposed audit adjustments, and the description of the management communication letter, and the comments provided. Lastly, we just wanna make aware, wanna make the city aware that for twenty twenty-four fiscal period, there's also a new pronouncement, Statement One Hundred, for them to be aware of, and ensure this is implemented accordingly. And that's all we have for you this evening, we can address any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for our auditors?
If I can just add a little something?
Sure.
There was a detailed presentation to the audit committee, it was done last week, a little over two hours that they actually spent with the audit committee, and Ms. Gerlick was there, Mr. Plata was not able to be there, he's out of town. But they went through it very thoroughly, they went through all the comments that the auditors had relating to their audit and the findings, and the responses that management had to those findings, and the audit committee is recommending that you accept and file the audit as submitted by your auditors.
Okay.
Maybe for the next time, can we, as a council, like for the coming year, combine, have that workshop with the audit committee? I think it'd be...
That would be a great idea.
Yes, sir, we surely can.
Because, I mean, in five minutes, you come and explain to us something that is so important, and it just, I personally don't feel comfortable with that.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
That's a very good idea, thank you for that. Okay. Anything else, any other comments? Okay. All right, I need a motion to accept the comprehensive annual financial report as presented. I will make a motion to accept the annual comprehensive financial report as presented as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to accept the annual financial report for fiscal year September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. All in favor say aye. 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 All opposed say no.
No, since I was in here, so I feel more comfortable, thank you.
All right, so that is, motion carries, that's a four one, with Mr. Plata voting against. Okay, thank you. I think we can go ahead and just do forty-seven, before the kids get in.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Before you, basically, I want to present a brief report of presentation of the income statement for the general fund. Basically, this year, we showed revenues and transference of sixty-one point two millions, and the total expansion transfer out was fifty-eight point eight million dollars. That translates that we had a net gain of two point three million dollars of revenues over expenditures. On the enterprise funds, we're showing basically that we had twenty-three point nine million dollars in revenues, and expenditures and transfers twenty-two point three, so we realized a revenue over expenditures of one point six million dollars. On the other enterprise funds, first golf course, we showed a revenue of one point five million dollars, and expenditures one point three, that we realized a gain of a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. The solid waste, we had revenues of eight point nine million dollars, and transfer and expenditures of eight point two, that gave us a net income of seven hundred and forty-six thousand. One thing that I'd like to note on that report is that, since they didn't do a transfer in the previous years, that's why we have one point one instead of the five hundred and fifty, so we're cashing up to the one that was not done in the previous year. On our event centers, we had revenues of a million forty-one thousand dollars, and expenditures eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars, that we saw a revenue over expenditures of a hundred and fifty point eight thousand dollars. And that's the report that I have before.
And Mayor, if you don't want to accept and file, if you recall, that's one of the goals that we have, and you'll be reviewing my goals in executive session, so if you want to wait when we come back to adopt it. So I can kind of go over in more details what he just presented, and compare that to the five-year, which was one of the major goals that you gave me when I first was hired a year ago.
Okay, all righty, then we'll wait on the vote on that item.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the presentation. Okay, so our Girl Scouts are here, and so we're gonna move to the proclamation, we're just gonna wait a little bit so all the girls can come in.
Hi, Jen.
Hi.
Just gonna give everyone a moment to come in.
Yes, absolutely. I don't know where our PR, I can do it from there. We have a PR for the chamber. Is this my napkin? Maybe?
Yes, I thought mine was.
Because you're still there. You want one? Do you have one? I have a Peril.
No, mine was.
Okay. Here's a new one, Lauren.
Mine was a Q-Tip.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. It's because I have tissue, if you want tissue.
No, but she wants a...
Yeah. I'm a teacher a little crazy.
All back from spring break. Boo hoo.
It's different troops, yeah.
All right, it looks like everyone's here. Hi, everyone, my name is Jennifer Ruis Longoria. Thank you so much for honoring the Mission Service Unit Girl Scouts. We are here representing the Girl Scouts of Greater South Texas. I am the Mission Service Unit Manager, and we are always so thankful on how much the City of Mission partners with us, and helps our girls become leaders of today and of tomorrow. With me here today, we have some representatives from Council, they too are very thankful for everything that the city does for our Girl Scouts. Some of our girls here today are really excited to receive their proclamations. They work very, very hard to represent themselves, their troops, their schools, their communities, and their families. They work year-round, earning badges, learning new skills, protecting and learning about the environment, becoming entrepreneurs in their communities by selling cookies, and I know a lot of you all are big cookie supporters, and we actually brought cookies today to share with Council, and we're really excited about that. And they're ready to just take on the world. So thank you so much for honoring our girls. They're not only learning skills that are bettering themselves, but they're also creating memories that will last a lifetime. Right now, with the way the world is, we're trying to get girls involved, keeping them busy with good stuff, and helping them become the leaders that they're destined to be. So thank you so much for honoring our girls, and thank you so much for always being so supportive of all of our events.
Thank you, and it's always a pleasure to have you all here. It's probably our highlight of, I'm gonna say of the month, possibly the year, so thank you for being here, and thank you for all that you all do throughout the year. I know it takes dedication, commitment, not only, not only y'all's commitment, but your family's commitment, and your extended family. So I'd like to congratulate them as well, and I'd wanna say thank you to the, to all the troop leaders, because without you guys, these girls would not blossom to the, to their expectation. So thank you so much, and I think we're gonna have Ms. Anna read the proclamation? Yes? Yes, okay.
Mayor, Council, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Julia Daisy Gordon Low founded the Girl Scouts of the USA on March twelfth, nineteen twelve, whereas in Girl Scouts, girls develop their leadership potential through activities that enable them to discover their values, skills, and the world around them, connect with others in a multicultural environment. Whereas Girl Scouting is continuing the legacy of creating gender-balanced leadership in the United States and the world in its second century of service to girls, by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making this country and the world a better place. Whereas Girl Scouts outdoor experiences are an integral part of the Girl Scout leadership experience for girls of all ages. Outdoor activities are woven into the Core Leadership Development Program in such a way that girls feel comfortable trying new things and testing their limits, and gain confidence and acquire new skills in a safe and supportive all-girl environment. Whereas Girl Scouts of Greater South Texas Troops Three Seventy-Eight, Three Zero Zero Four, One Zero Zero Five, One Ninety-Five, Three Nineteen, Ten Thirty, Ten Forty-Two, Thirty Two Thirty, Thirty Two Twenty-Six, One Oh Six, Twenty, Five Ninety, Seventy-Nine, and Juliette are committed to ensuring every girl has the opportunity to explore and build an interest in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, helping them to develop critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills, and collaborative skills, which are vital throughout life. Whereas Girls in Grades Kinder through Twelfth Grade who demonstrate extraordinary leadership through action projects that have sustainable impacts on their communities and beyond are presented the Girl Scouts Bronze, Silver, and Gold Awards. Now therefore, we the City Council, City of Mission, do hereby applaud the commitment of Girl Scouting and Girl Scouts of Greater South Texas, and have supported and continued advancement of the girls in their roles as leaders here in our city, and declare the week of March twenty-fourth through thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, to be Girl Scout Week in Mission Texas, proclaimed on this the twenty-fourth day of March, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Yes, and one, yes, yes, with the troop, with the troop, yeah. So we're gonna go down, down there.
Three Zero Zero Four. One Zero Zero Five. Ten Thirty.
1030. 1042. 3230.
Congratulations.
Thank you. 3226.
Yeah, I know, it's been a while. I just didn't know, like, I don't want these guys to...
Oh, you're very kind.
Thank you so much for the cookies. My stomach really appreciates it.
I wanna eat it right now, I'm hungry. See my tits?
No.
Just a lot.
Huh?
I put a lot.
Huh? Auto-correct? I hate it when that happens. That's why we do WhatsApp, 'cause you can go and edit. I think that's another thing that we need to discuss when we do that. For her to say on WhatsApp. Okay. 'Cause you can edit and maybe disappear.
So, item number 33, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we will open public hearing at this time and we're gonna review item number 33. It's a rezoning request. Pass it. Think of me when you need something. Okay, yes.
Okay, item 33, that is basically a down zoning. It's a down zoning from a general business district to a single-family residential district. It's on Kirk Street, just south of Griffin Parkway. In my opinion, the original intent for that lot was single-family residential and the owner would like to build a house in the lot. So, it's just a basic down zoning. No opposition from the surrounding property owners and PNC approved it unanimously.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, there is none. Ms. Anna, is there anyone online?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff or a motion?
I want to approve.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request from C3 to R1 at Lot 73, Las Misiones Estates subdivision. And this would carry ordinance number 5610. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Yes, this is a zoning from agricultural to general business district. This is a property that the EDC purchased recently just east of the Olive Garden Restaurant. It's a five-acre tract along the expressway east of Bryan Road. So, you have commercial zoning all around. Commercial in the comprehensive plan. Here we have a photo, five-acre tract, photo of the property. No opposition. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval unanimously.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or opposition? Is there anyone online? No? There are any questions or a motion?
I want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request for 5.151 acres out of Lot 17-11, West Edition of Sherland, from AOI to C3. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously and that's ordinance number 5611. Next item?
The next item is a conditional use permit for an event center named The Pink Society. It's at 1512 East Expressway D3, just east of the La Quinta Hotel. The suite has 132 square feet, so it's for small events, no more than 30 guests. 10 parking spaces are required. The commercial plaza has 219 spaces. Commercial zoning, the aerial photo of the plaza, that's the suite, floor plan, and those are the conditions. And no opposition. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval unanimously.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? There any questions?
Mayor, I have a... I have a question, mayor.
Yes.
Did P&amp;Z also approve life of use?
Yes, for this one, yes. Because it's an event center for small, it's a small event center for little, mostly for little kids, for small birthday parties.
How big is the event center?
So, it's 932 square feet, no more than 30 people. No more than 30 guests at a time.
There's solid event centers there already, right?
In that plaza, there's, I have, there's a lot of different businesses. I can give you the...
I've been there.
Yeah. And it's mostly occupied, so it's a successful commercial plaza.
You ready for a motion? Mayor, would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for life of use. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay. And that would carry ordinance number 5612. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item?
Item 36 is another conditional use permit for another event center called Algo VIP. The location is 704 East Griffin Parkway, Suite 100. It's on Griffin Parkway, approximately 300 feet west of Mayberry. The suite has 4,000 square feet with a capacity for 150 guests. This item will come back in the near future because they are gonna, they are applying for a TABC license for BYOB. So, right now it's just the event center. In your next meeting or the one after that, the alcohol permit will come before you. 50 parking spaces are required. 63 are provided in the plaza and it's gonna, they're share parking with the other businesses.
Okay, is there anyone? I'm sorry.
And then just the aerial photo of the plaza.
Okay.
Photo is the suite on the west side and then photos of the interior. And then you have the list of conditions. Staff recommending life of the use. Planning and zoning commission recommended two-year permit due to the parking concerns about the parking.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? No? Okay. Are there any questions or a motion? And this, there is a difference in what the P&amp;Z is recommending and what staff is recommending?
This one, because they had concerns about the parking, they're recommending two years instead of life of the use.
Okay.
There is issues with the parking. Mayor, I move to approve with a recommendation of a two-year.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve the conditional use permit for the event center at 704 East Griffin Parkway for a two-year period. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously and that's ordinance number 5613. Next item?
The next one is another event center. This one is a Buttercream Delights Events. This is in the downtown on Canway between Town Landry and 11th Street. The suite has 2,700 square feet. Due to the proposed size, 20 parks are, 20 parking spaces are required. But as you know, in the downtown, we don't have parking requirements. But they, they are proposing that the city parking, so that's the aerial. So, as you can see, there are city parking lots to the east and to, across the street to the west. So, they're proposing for the use of the city parking lots, for the parking, for the customers, for this proposed event center. There's no, there's no other way for them to provide parking.
Okay, is there anyone here?
And a photo of the building, floor plan, the list of conditions, and planning and zoning commission recommended also two-year to monitor, to monitor the parking situation.
Pura party mission, huh?
Very festive.
Okay. So is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition?
I'm here on the Zoom. I'm not sure if they can hear me.
Are there any questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to approve with a two-year, for a two-year permit only.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit at one thousand six North Conway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that is ordinance number five-six-one-four.
The next one is a conditional use permit for a pool house. This is at twenty-eight-eleven Santa Ana Street. It's in the Los Milagros subdivision in the Sherland area. It's four hundred, four hundred feet south of the Los Milagros Road. And that's the aerial photo of the house. And that's the proposed pool house, which is good-sized. And so you have the conditions. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval unanimously.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? There any questions or a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to allow the conditional use permit for a construction of a pool house at twenty-eight-eleven Santa Ana Street with ordinance number five-six-one-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item?
Yes, this is for the Point Paddle, a business that is under construction along the expressway with Travis Street. It's just north of the La Quinta Hotel. And they would like to, once, when they open, they would like to be able to sell alcoholic beverages with the, with the meals. That's the photo of the property, and that's the building. They have all gone vertical already. The side plan, floor plan, at least that's the conditions. And this one also, planning and zoning commission recommended a two-years to monitor the alcohol sales.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? There any questions or a motion?
I move to approve with a two-year.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for onsite conception of alcohol beverages at fifteen oh-eight East Expressway eighty-three with, and that would be ordinance number five-six-one-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that is with a two-year term. Okay. Thank you, next item?
The next item is a conditional use permit for the Ice House. It's a, it's a bar that has been with the city for many, many years. With the current owners, it's been in place for three and a half years. They missed the renewal of the conditional use permit, so that's why, it's going before just a new conditional use permit because the, the one that was granted expired. The location is eight fifteen North Francisco Avenue.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request?
And this one also, planning and zoning recommended two years.
Two years, okay.
Is there any ownership?
Yes.
I would like to speak in favor. My name is Veronica Galligan. My husband and I are the other owners of the Ice House. We purchased a stead three and a half years ago. We have had no issues at all. We only serve beer and wine. We've complied with what the city has asked us to do. It's a neighborhood bar. Everybody that lives in that area comes to the bar. It's very friendly, it's very inviting, and we hope that you can support us. And yes, we have met with PNC, and they have recommended a two-year permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or opposed?
Maria Sepenasalinas, giving them, this is not a neighborhood bar. Nobody in the neighborhood goes there. It's all outsiders. Giving them an alcohol permit, they come in with their loud music, like they were pretty loud Friday, and we, the citizens, are tired of calling you all and contacting you. And you know this is an ongoing thing. We are a residential area, not an entertainment district. It should be converted into a restaurant, so yes, the neighborhood can go and eat. There's still drugs there, there's still prostitution, and then, and I'm opposed. I want kids to remember it as a great restaurant, not a place to come get drunk. You just said puro party admission, exactly. You're not from my neighborhood, you're not from my neighborhood. She hasn't been there for as long as I have. They should have a barrier fence if they want to have their music outside, or keep no music outside because there's a business right next to it. The people in front, they're tired of contacting you all, and they're tired of fighting. They're Christians, and I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Is there anyone online? There any questions? Or staff? Or chief? Chief? I have a quick question, chief.
Chief Torres.
And it's just in, in reference to responses. Have you had any requests for help?
Chief Torres, Bishop PD, I do not have the stats for that location at this time, mayor. I can look into it and let you know.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions or comments?
Parking has been as it has been, that's how we purchased it. There is no prostitution, there is nothing that she has claimed. I'm hoping that police can actually provide you with reports from the time that we purchased it. I'm not sure why the neighbors are upset we're not loud, and yet people do, from the neighborhood, do come to the bar. And so I'm not sure why she doesn't think so. Maybe she doesn't go to the bar. I don't drink, I'm a bar owner. I have many people that go to that bar, and we serve non-alcoholic beer. So we're not loud, we comply with all the measures of the city. And again, I'm hoping that the city does provide you, or the city police does provide you with those reports because this is nonsense for her to come here and accuse without having proof is very disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galligan. All righty. Yes, chief?
Mayor, I checked with the communications. There hasn't been any calls in the last two days. But I can tell you, as a result of the system being down, we cannot get that information at this time.
At this point, yes, okay. I totally understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Or a motion? We could table this item if you all wanted to do that, to wait for the police documentation on their responses.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and table the item until we have all the necessary information.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to table the item until we get, we get the full information. Okay, all righty, thank you. Next item?
This one is for, to allow sheet metal manufacturing along the expressway west of Inspiration Road. This had been approved in the past, but the applicant never got the sheet metal manufacturing started. So that's why it's coming before you again, but it had been approved in the past.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? Are there any questions for staff or a motion? Can we see the, the aerial on this one, please?
Is this a renew, or this is a?
So the recommendation is for life of the use, with the understanding that the CUP can be revoked. But you can, you can do a two-year approval if that's the desire of the city council.
The question was, is this, is this a renewal?
No, because it was, it was approved two years ago, but they never started it.
Oh, I see.
They never started it. So now, now she's ready to start. But the CUP was expired, so that's why it's coming on.
I see. And that's why it says to keep a portable building, because it's already there, because it was approved previously?
The portable building is, I think, is the next agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong one.
We're in the sheet manufacturing.
Right, okay. Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
So this is manufacturing, mayor?
It is manufacturing.
Sheet, sheet manufacturing.
That's a sheet, oh, yeah.
They do, they do roofs, roofs. Sheet metal for roofs, is what they do.
Yes.
Which is really, they don't make any noise, they just roll the, the ten into, into.
The name of the business, the name of the business is Liberty Steel and Supply.
And there was no opposition?
No, no opposition.
And PNC approved the, the life of use on this one? Yes, okay.
Mayor, I would like to recommend approval based on the recommendation of planning and zoning.
Second.
And staff.
All right. There is a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as presented for life of use. And the ordinance number would be five-six-one-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Now the portable building?
Now it's, yeah, now it's a portable building. It's already, it's already, there is a business in the very northwest corner of the city on Three Mile Line and Moorefield Road. So it's, it's a small auto sales place. There's a photo. And that's the portable building that is at the site. But the applicant is leasing the property, and so that's why.
Okay, so.
It's a lease of the property, so that's why she doesn't want to build a building. Just keep the portable, keep the portable building. Planning and zoning commission approved it for, for, for two years only.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? Are there any questions, comments?
I just wanted to ask for that little carport that they added there. Is it secure? Where the two cars are in there, next to the building?
I can look, I can look into that.
Yeah, the landscaping, and then that kind of looks like an eye, so I just want to make sure that it's, it's built properly.
Yes, I can, I can check into that.
Thank you.
So they asking for the, on the portable building, but also, isn't that two portable? Would there be two portable buildings?
It's just, it's just one. They're white, this is a white building there where the office is located.
And no landscaping?
We can, we can make that an additional condition, so we can add it to the conditions. Actually, it's, it's already there, adding an additional landscaping.
Where would the landscaping go in? Because I, I see just.
It's not a lot of space. I'll meet with them and try to get some landscaping in there.
I would like some landscaping for Bugs Bunny there, so.
I make a motion for approval, as discussed.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the building. And that would carry ordinance number five-six-one-eight. All in, is that right? Ms. Anna? Okay.
If I, I'm sorry, if I may. Is it life of use, or is it two years?
Two years.
We did two years?
Two years. Okay. All in favor to approve the, the conditional use permit for two years, subject to all the recommendations by staff and PNC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
This one is a conditional use permit for a home occupation. So the applicant lives in the house and has a small business that he runs out of the house, urgent care transport. And so that's his house, and he has an office there. He has no customers going to the house, he doesn't have any signs. So you cannot really tell that there's a business at the location. So you have there the conditions, and planning and zoning commission recommended approval for life of the use.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? Are there any questions or a motion?
So, so what are we doing? We're planning to one, one deed, or lots one?
It's lots one thirty-eight and one thirty-b, of the replat of lots one thirty and one thirty-one. So I guess, I guess there was a replat, there was a re, three plats there, and so that's the legal description of, of his property.
So we're changing the description from one thirty-eight and B to one, to three different lots? One thirty, thirty, one thirty-one, and one thirty-two?
From, from three, we have two lots.
Yeah. So it was three lots, and that they replanted to make two lots?
Well, it's been like that. It hasn't been like that since the purchase.
I move to approve, ma'am.
Okay. There's a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve the conditional use permit for a home occupation at thirty-three oh-seven Amethyst, and that would carry ordinance number five-six-one-nine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
This is a conditional use permit for the drive-through and for the sale of alcoholic beverages for unpermitted consumption for the Los Cuates Taqueria, Los Cuates Taco Shop. And this is at twenty-five fifteen Colorado Street, at the corner with Taylor. And that's the, the suite that has the restaurant. So they would, you know, they would like to sell beverages, alcoholic beverages with the meals. Planning and zoning commission approved the drive-through for life of the use, but the alcohol sales for two years.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or opposed to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? Are there any questions or a motion?
Can you show us the picture of the location, please? Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve. It's for the drive-through service window, right?
It's for the drive-through service window for life of use and the conditional use for onsite conception, for consumption for two years.
Okay.
Okay. So that's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit, as discussed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
So this, this one is Las Calles de Mexico Taqueria. This one came before you back in January, but they had not applied for TABC, so no action was taken back then. And that's the photo. So based, based on the previous one, you could also do the, the two-year approval.
I'm sorry, this, it's not, is it a one-year? PNC recommended a one or two-year?
This, this went before PNC back in January, and they approved it for two years.
On the right.
But we can do life of use, right?
Yes. If you feel comfortable with that, with the understanding it can be revoked, right? So if there are any problems, uh, but yes, you could.
It can be revoked, right, if there's any issues.
For life of the use, uh, with the understanding the CUP can be revoked, or for two years similar to the previous one.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the write-up says P and Z recommended approval for one-year reevaluation.
Oh, okay, yeah, so, it's because this was approved back in January.
Okay.
Yes.
So it was, so it was reconsidered to, to a one-year, um, reevaluation for the sale of alcohol.
Why, is that an issue?
I think that, that was what the board did back in, back in January. But there was no opposition from the surrounding property owners.
Yes, so they're extending the hours from, uh, two, instead of to twelve to two AM.
Correct.
And that's what, that's what the request is.
Yes, yeah, it's also for that.
And for live music.
And, yeah, they wanna have live music.
Until two AM as well?
Yeah, so, yeah, karaoke, yeah.
So I, I can understand why they wanna do the one-year evaluation.
Yeah, to check in.
Okay.
Next to that, I happen, mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve base, uh, on the, along with the recommendations of planning and zoning.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as, uh, approved by P and Z, which is a one-year reevaluation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay, that, uh, ends our public hearing items. We're gonna move on to approvals and authorizations, and that would, uh, item number forty-eight is the next item.
Mayor, now we're ready for the session.
Yeah, there.
Good afternoon, mayor, uh, council, city manager. I come before you seeking authorization to lease one twenty-twenty-five Chevrolet Truck Tahoe, two-wheel-drive, four-door LS unit in the amount of ninety-three thousand, three hundred fifty-eight, seventy-five, and one twenty-twenty-four four-truck F-250 Super Duty, four-wheel-drive crew cab, XL in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, seven one three oh seven, from D and M Leasing Byboard, number seven four four dash twenty-four. This purchase is for the fire department seeking authorization to lease those, uh, individual trucks. These units would be replacing a twenty-twenty Ram fifteen-hundred and a twenty-twenty Ford F-250 Super Duty to be surplus by the department. Staff and city manager recommend approval, uh, and these two individual trucks are for the fire department. I think the, the crew cab, the F-250 is, uh, used by the shift captains, and, uh, the Tahoe, uh, will be for, uh, fire prevention, if I'm not mistaken.
So there's two vehicles, right?
It's two vehicles, we're replacing, uh, two vehicles that their term is up, there, there's those, those, uh, vehicles that right now, that are five-year terms up, the warranty's gone already, as, 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 you know, like every other vehicle, the five-year, uh, powertrain warranty is, is, is due April the first. So, uh, the fire department's requesting to replace these with these two, uh, newer units. Uh, and the outfitting is what's getting the price up a little bit higher, of what the original cost is of the vehicle.
So one is tw, one is at twenty-five, and the other one at twenty-twenty-four?
Yes, sir, one's a Tahoe, and the other one's an F-250.
Is that okay?
Mayor, city council, I can maybe verify some of the, the reasoning for the request. Uh, the shift captain is our sector, uh, that unit is run, uh, twenty-four hours a day, it's non-stop running. Uh, it's been having some issues, it has gone to the shop several times, and it has been putting a, a good dent in the budget. The other one also, if you, if, um, you recall, we also approved, uh, the council approved an additional inspector, uh, but we, we don't have an additional vehicle, so the intent is to reshuffle some of those, uh, fleet arrangements, uh, including myself and the fire marshal, so that we can get that extra, uh, additional inspector, the vehicle that he needs to do inspections.
Okay, and what happens to the surplus vehicles?
They will, uh, auction off. They will be picked up by D and M, those in the auction, and they should send it to whatever shop.
Who auction, who auctions off, we, or they?
It's D and M auction off, we auction off. Who auction?
We, it's, we have the option for both, so whatever we decide at the end of the day.
So D and M usually auctions off, they did better deals than we do.
Okay, okay.
That's one of the things we'll have to visit with you a little bit, I, we're gonna go, and I think you wanted to go on one of them into executive session, so we'll kind of cover some of that.
Yes.
I don't know if it's that one or the next one.
It was this one.
You wanna go in the executive session, so we've got.
Yeah, we'll, can, we'll, we'll talk, discuss it in executive session, will we? Is that okay, if we wait on the, on the motion for that one, okay? And, and just a real quick question, we're, and we're okay with a twenty-twenty-four unit that, that would be a new lease?
At, at the time when we spoke with, uh, Jennifer, uh, that was the only available unit that they had at twenty-twenty-four instead of twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
So it does make the, the, uh, department run, uh, functionally as the way it's.
It's a new vehicle.
It's a new vehicle.
But it is a new unit.
Yes, they do have it.
Okay, all righty, thank you. All right, next item?
Yes, ma'am, uh, next item is authorization to award contract to Kenlock Equipment and Supply Incorporated for the lease of special, specialized heavy equipment via buyboard contracts, number six seventy, six seventy-six dash twenty-two and number seven twenty-three dash twenty-three in the amount of one million, two hundred fifty-three eighty-four point thirty-four. Uh, staff is seeking authorization to lease two Vector twenty-one hundred I combination sewer vectors. Kenlock Equipment Supply will be providing a fleet and maintenance program that entails repairs and maintenance services and warranty for the term of the lease. The negotiated proposal for Kenlock Equipment and Supplies outlining the terms of this lease as well as a pay, uh, payment breakdown of sixty monthly payments of nine thousand, uh, zero twenty-five per month, with the option to purchase at the end of the five-year lease term. City and staff manager recommend approval, and these two vectors would be for Public Works Water Distribution Department.
Okay.
And as well, the, we have two currently vectors, and their, their term is up as well, uh, already coming up, and, uh, so the first one will be coming in April, approved in mid-April, and the second one will come in, in the first week of May, for these two new vectors for Public Works.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, any questions or discussion?
I do have a question, was this, uh, Mike may ask, was this a, was part of her budget?
Yeah, the two existing Vector trucks, uh, one of them for sure is in, uh, we're spending a lot of money on, on repairs on it, so they're both, time to replace them both.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'm going to approve.
Second, okay, there's a motion and a second to award the contract, um, as presented and discussed, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, next item?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council, I come before you to present item fifteen, authorization to award bid to Frontera Materials for the purchase of hot mix and cold mix asphalt for the Public Works Department. The city administration has accepted and opened four bid responses for hot and cold mix asphalt. Staff recommends awarding bid to Frontera Materials, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all the specifications and the contract terms is for one year with two option, with the option of renew for two additional one-year renewals. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and it, orders will be placed on as needed basis throughout one year, based term bid number twenty-five dash three twenty-three dash zero three dash zero five. Hot mix asphalt with delivery is eighty dollars with forty-two cents per ton. Cold mix asphalt with delivery, it's a hundred dollars and forty-two cents per ton. Hot mix asphalt without delivery is seventy dollars per ton. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second, there's a motion and a second to, um, approve the bid for, um, Frontera Materials to purchase hot and cold mix as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero, next item?
Thank you, mayor council, next item, item number fifty-one, award bid for the sanitary sewer trunk line project from Glasgow to Bryan Road to RDH Site and Concrete in the amount of two million, one hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars with fifty cents, with respective budget amendment. Accepted and open eight bid responses, and staff recommends award bidding to RDH and Concrete, who is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting all the specifications in the amount of two million, one hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars with fifty cents. Project cost will be reimbursed via reimbursement agreement approved by the M R A Terrence on November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
And this came in within budget, right?
It became, uh, below our engineering estimate, we had an engineering estimate for two-point-six million dollars.
Okay.
And it came roughly to two-point-two million dollars.
Okay, great, that's good news.
Yes.
Are there any other questions?
I'm going to approve.
Second, there's a motion and a second to award the sanitary sewer trunk line project from Glasgow to Bryan to RDH Site and Concrete LLC. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item?
Good evening, mayor, city council, city manager. Item number fifty-two, seeking authorization to accept, uh, supplemental grant award for the FY twenty-two Operation Stone Garden Program with the Office of the Governor, in the amount of one hundred four thousand, nine hundred thirty-four, with a no-match requirement and with respective budget amendment. The Mission Police Department was awarded supplemental grant funding in the amount of one oh four thousand, nine hundred thirty-four, uh, which will further enhance its current grant project. The department is seeking authorization to accept supplemental award, which will allow the, which will allow the acquisition of six all-terrain vehicles and three utility trailers to enhance its capabilities during Operation Stone Garden. Uh, staff and city manager recommend approval.
Make a motion for approval, mayor?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize and accept the supplemental grant award FY twenty-two Operation Stone Garden for the amount of one hundred and four thousand, nine thirty-four, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Five zero, next item?
Item number fifty-three, seeking authorization to approve CDPG Housing Assistance Program Guidelines revisions, and I believe the revisions are in your packets as well, if you'd like to follow along. Uh, the Citizens Advisory Committee met on February twenty-fifth and approved recommendations to amend the CDPG Housing Assistance Program Guidelines as follows. Under the limitations on the amount of deferred loans, the maximum of up to forty-five thousand, as opposed to twenty-five thousand, uh, per dwelling, uh, unit for housing rehabilitations to include manufactured homes with no maximum restrictions, uh, to the current appraised value, and then as well as revisions to Exhibit B, which is the inspections checklist, and that's to increase the, uh, air conditioning AC score weight from one percent to ten percent, and to decrease exterior wall scores weight from fifteen percent to ten percent, and to decrease interior walls ceiling score, uh, weight from ten percent to six percent. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, are there any questions or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to, um, approve the CDPG Assistance Program Guidelines revisions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Next item?
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor, council. Item fifty-four, authorization for ratification of purchase of four net firewalls from Telepro at a cost of forty-four thousand, three hundred four point fifty-two, utilizing tips contract two-three-zero-one-oh-five. Four firewalls for PD will be used to segregate PD network by providing direct internet access, strengthen security posture protecting east and west traffic, and provide encryption for the two substations. One firewall will be used to strengthen security posture at city hall, staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, are there any questions or a motion?
I make a motion to approve, but I have a question for, um, Mr. Vamitas.
Go ahead.
What about for Minus Court, are they gonna have their own system too?
No, they're, they're gonna be part of the city hall, they've always been part, part of the city hall.
Can you say that again? They're gonna all be part of the?
What's that?
Do you mind repeating what, I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, Minus Court has always been part of the city hall.
Oh, part of us.
We're just gonna segregate PD.
PD's, this is segregating.
All the departments are gonna be part of the city hall, yes.
And everyone else will be part?
Exactly.
Its own part, but PD, this is segregating PD's.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mayor, and it's, uh, Mr. Perez, I would just like to see what the difference would be, maybe talking to the judge and staff there about, um, how would we, it be for them to be, um, on their own the way they used to be before? Like, what would be the difference?
Oh, no, they, they've always been with the city, ever since I've been here.
No, since you've been here, yes, but prior to you being here, it wasn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you want us to take a look at, to have them stand alone like the, like the police department?
Well, it's just that I'm sure they're going through a lot right now with every, yeah, we'll talk about it later.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to?
Oh, sorry, yes, I make a motion to approve.
And a second, okay.
And then I ask a question.
All righty, okay, uh, so there is a motion and a second to purchase the, uh, firewalls from Telepro as discussed for forty-four thousand, three hundred and four dollars and fifty-two cents, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, next item?
Mayor, city council, city manager, authorization to purchase a Ford FR Intrepid Power Load from Simmons Martin Emergency Group LLC in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven via HCAC contract AM ten twenty-three. The Mission Fire Department is seeking authorization to purchase a Ford FR Intrepid Power Load from Simmons Emergency Group. The transit ambulance will be designated as a medic six and will be used whether, when another unit is down for means, ensuring the continued treatment and care of the mission citizens during such times. As you know, we are having some issues with some of our units, and this will help, uh, with our fleet. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, are there any questions?
Real quick, this is a small ambulance that you see on the Ford Transit chassis, a little Mercedes Benz, it's, it's not as heavy-duty. But most of our runs now are going to the mission hospital, and we just need to have an extra vehicle. It's about half the cost of what we, what we normally run, but, uh, we think that we need to have that, uh, backup, because of the number of calls we have, we have a vehicle down, it, it really puts a strain on, on the staff.
Okay, any questions or comments? Or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second, there's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of an FR Intrepid Power Load from Simmons Martin Emergency Group, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero, next item?
Mayor, city council, authorization to purchase NFPA fifteen-eight-two physicals and NFPA fifteen-eight-three wellness fitness evaluations from LifeScan Wellness Center for a total cost of eight three thousand and fifty dollars via sole source vendor. Mission Fire Department is seeking authorization to purchase the NFPA fifteen-eight-two physicals wellness fitness evaluations from LifeScan Centers. The NFPA physicals and wellness fitness evaluations are broken down into six categories, annual public safety exam, the cardio-pulmonary assessment, ultrasound screening, blood and laboratory tests, fitness evaluation, and medical clearances. The testing will be for one hundred and, uh, one hundred and ten full-time firefighters for the amount of eight three thousand and fifty. Uh, this is also, uh, that we have annually budgeted for and helps our firefighters do pre-screen, pre-screening for any cancer that may have, uh, come up, and, uh, along as any medical conditions that we can prevent from moving forward.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the fifteen-eight-two physicals and, um, NFPA fifteen-eight-three wellness fitness evaluations from LifeScan Wellness, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, mayor council.
Thank you. Next item, chief?
Hello, Chief, to others, Mission PD, item number fifty-seven, seeking council's direction for the implementation of a speed hump in the area of twenty-seven-hundred block Norma Drive, in accordance with the City of Mission Code of Ordinance, Division Five, Speed Bumps, Section one-ten zero, oh, point three fifty-one, uh, to Section one-ten point three fifty-four. On three-five, twenty-twenty-five, the Traffic Safety Committee, uh, met and recommended the speed hump after seventy-seven percent of signatures were obtained from the residents there at that location.
Are there any questions?
Chief, I have a question, where is that area around?
Two mile line and Taylor, the first street, uh, going south, or south of there is Nicole, and then the second one is Norma Lee. Two mile line and Taylor Road area.
Also that way. Yeah, okay.
It's be, it's before two mile line, right?
Sir?
Yes, it's before two mile line.
I make a motion for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the speed humps at, uh, hump at twenty-seven-hundred North Bryan, mm, I'm sorry, Norma Drive. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number fifty-eight, we're going to discuss that in really quickly in executive session as well, so we're going to move on to item number fifty-nine.
Yes, Madam Mayor, fifty-nine. David Earl, are you on Zoom?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay. This is the resolution to go ahead and create the P I D.
Okay, he's on, sir.
Okay. David, you want to go ahead and cover fifty-nine, the resolution to create the P I D for Simran?
Certainly. Certainly. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. This is David Earl with Earl and Associates. As you'll recall, on February twenty-fourth, this council considered a public hearing, and at that public hearing heard evidence, after which, in the close of the public hearing, you passed a resolution making certain findings regarding the advisability of creating the P I D for Simran. This action item is a follow-up to that. This is a resolution based on your findings that actually establishes the Simran Public Improvement District and sets forth the parameters of that district according to state law. The district is intended to be managed by a board, supervised by a board that's appointed by and will be managed by this council, and that board appointment, a five-member board, will be in a separate action item which follows this one. So this action simply establishes the Public Improvement District itself. All preliminary actions have been taken that are required by law, and if it's the pleasure of the council to create it, this resolution by passage will establish the district.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Earl?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the creation of the P I D.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, and this would be resolution number...
This is Resolution nineteen sixty-eight.
Nineteen sixty-eight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
I abstain since someone rested another Simran.
Okay, thank you. So that's four in favor and one abstention. Next item.
Next item is the appointment of individuals to the P I D board. The recommendation is that the mayor be on there, because you need to have elected officials, so it'll be the mayor of Mission. The major property owner in the P I D district is going to be the Simran Country Club, so we're asking that the chairman of the Mission E D C be on there, and then the three citizens or property owners from the P I D areas, Joe Phillips and Camarillo and Dali Lizondo. David, do you want to expand on this particular item a little bit?
Certainly. This particular item is the appointment of that five-member board of directors for the P I D. The P I D will be managed by this board. The board will serve at the will of the council and will take on the day-to-day functions of managing and overseeing the P I D, so it won't be on the council's back to do that. This body will report back to the council, at least annually. Initially, it'd be more often than that, as they go through and establish a budget and a plan for the property and work with whoever the succeeding owner will be, but once that's done, they'll return to the council with a full budget, a service and assessment plan, and a recommendation to levy assessments to help fund the improvements that need to be done to improve the Simran Golf Course and Country Club facilities. And we'd advise in favor of this action item, appointing this board so it can get busy with the business of the improvement district and getting back to the council as soon as possible with a full plan, with final number estimates, and with other recommendations. The way the P I D is established, there'll be an agency that will help the council with the assessment and service plan functions, for example, like P three or someone like that, and then the P I D board will work with a group as a consultant, it could be our firm or some other entity, to help them, guide them through the process of coming up with the service assessment plan parameters and carrying out the project once it's approved by the council.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointments to the Simran Public Improvement Board of Directors as stated.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the appointments for Simran Public Improvement District as discussed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that would be a four in favor and one abstention.
Thank you, David.
Thank you all very much, and thank you on behalf of the Association membership. We appreciate it.
Thank you, David. Okay, we've already taken on sixty-one and sixty-two, so next item is unfinished business. I don't think there's anything there. Routine matters?
Yes, routine matters. We have a couple of events coming up. We have Club Easy Coast Play Sessions, Boxhead, that'll be Wednesday, March twenty-sixth at six P M. at the Sphere Memorial Library. Trash Bash is this Saturday from seven A M., and they'll start picking up at seven forty-five, and that'll be at the C W V Park is where they'll meet to start Autism Awareness Walk April twenty-sixth at ten A M. at the all-inclusive Lions Park.
All right. City Council comments? Ms. Jessica?
No comments, Mayor.
No comments.
Okay.
I do have a comment. I would like to encourage everyone to come out Saturday. Last year, this, to the annual Trash Bash where we pick up trash. Last year, it was a great event. We had a great turnout, and it would just beautify Mission and helping pick up trash. It's just another thing we can do to help our community and our city, so if y'all couldn't make it out, it'd be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
No comment.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any comments, any additional comments? I would like to just echo Mr. Alexa's comments about Saturday's event. That being said, is there a motion to go into...
We do have a new brush truck up at front, so maybe after you finish the meeting, go by and take a look at it, and Michael and his firefighters will love to show you the new equipment you just purchased.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Sir, move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
And there's a motion and a second to ratify the agreements as discussed in executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously four zero. And items number four is also a...
Motion to approve the counter offer.
Yes. And for city manager to proceed as directed.
Right.
There's a motion to move forward.
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously four zero. And item number five has items A through... Through H. And is there a motion to move forward?
Also move.
Second. There's a motion and a second to move forward with items on item number...
Five A through...
Five...
Five...
H.
H.
And with the appropriate resolution numbers, Ms. Onam. You'll assign them.
From sixty-nine to seventy-six.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. And that is it for our business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.